Call the meeting back to order, a meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin, would you read our community prayer?
Yes, sir. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessings as we concern our life with the opportunities to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all that we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve and that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek. And keep those serving in our arms.
Michael asked me to come tonight to update you and the residents on what's going on with the triple E mosquito situation in Carver. I prepared what I've entitled a summary of the triple E mosquito threat and how we got to where we are. Board of Health received notice on July 24th that the presence of triple E was found in testing pools in southeastern Massachusetts, declaring Carver to be a moderate-risk area. As a result, the board immediately imposed a dust-to-dawn ban on all outdoor activities in public areas, shirtless park, all the town playgrounds, recreational areas at the schools, including the football stadium, tennis courts, the public beaches at John Pond and Sampson's Pond. We did allow for the community and school sports programs to continue, subject to our spray-to-play policy that we enacted at the last time we had this triple E situation, requiring anybody going on the playing fields to be sprayed up hill and down. That worked successfully. We determined that our dust-to-dawn, for the purposes of what we're trying to do, is the ban starts 30 minutes prior to sundown and extends 30 minutes after sunrise. Additional testing revealed an increase in the number of triple E mosquitoes, and seven days later, on July 31st, the state raised our risk in Carver to high. The board reviewed the information from the state and determined that no change in the ban was needed at this time. On August 8th, the community was able to come together and celebrate Carver Night Out. What people don't realize is that almost didn't happen due to the high risk. However, the Board of Health and Police Department worked very cooperatively to make the safe event. The grounds were sprayed late Wednesday and again on late Thursday. Information regarding the triple E threat was provided on the various social media pages in town, and a supply of bug spray was made available at site. Just two days later, on Saturday, August 10th, we received notice of the first human case of triple E in neighboring Rochester, and that the risk had been raised to critical. Immediate action was taken by the board to revise the ban by revoking the spray-to-play policy. The school department and recreation department were notified of the change immediately, and the police department was requested to monitor all of the affected areas while on patrol around dusk. On August 11th, the state announced the first round of aerial spraying would commence immediately, including most of Plymouth and Bristol counties. The spraying would be weather-dependent and take several days to complete. Please remember that this aerial spraying is a temporary measure to reduce the threat of triple E. Precautions will need to be taken until the first hard frost in the fall. On Monday, August 12th, this message was added to the town's website under the Board of Health page. Due to the state's recent upgrading of the risk status in Carver to critical, all outside activities from dust-to-dawn are suspended immediately until such time as the status changes. This includes the suspension of our previous spray-to-play policy for all recreational programs. This decision is based on the first documented human case of triple E being found within southern Plymouth County, the current threat level, and our responsibility to you, the public. Please, if you must be outside between dusk and dawn, wear appropriate clothing, long-sleeved shirts and pants, and use insect repellent. Talk to your neighbors, spread the word so everyone knows the danger. On August 22nd, the state announced a second round of aerial spraying expected to occur over several days. On August 26th, the state announced that there were now four human cases confirmed in the state, and one had been fatal. Here we are on September 3rd, and the threat has increased statewide, awaiting word of additional aerial spraying by the state. There are 28 towns now at the critical level. It took just 17 days from the initial announcement that Carver was at a moderate risk to rise to the level of critical. As the chairman of the Board of Health, I am proud to serve this town along with my fellow board members Eric Mueller and Barry Callis, as well as our agent Kevin Ford. While many other towns initially labeled to be on the moderate risk were deciding what, if any, action they should take, your Board of Health was able to act immediately, being very proactive in invoking the initial ban and modifying it as necessary. Along with this, we appreciate the cooperation we received from the schools, Recreation Commission, and the support of our police department. While our town-wide ban only applies to public areas under control of the -- we would hope that the residents would consider it to be voluntary as it applies to them. Triple E is extremely dangerous. The outcome for those that contracted is not good. Statistics show a 40% mortality rate, and those that do survive have severe neurological issues lasting for years. The board will continue to be diligent in monitoring all available information from the state, posting updates to the town's website and social media outlets. In the meantime, please remember that it remains critically important for people in communities at critical high and moderate risk of triple E to continue to take personal precautions against mosquito bites. These steps include using EPA-approved bug spray, wearing long sleeves and pants outdoors to reduce exposed skin, and limiting outdoors activities from dust-to-dawn when mosquitoes are most active. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I have a question. We don't normally respond during citizen's participation, so why don't you hang on to your selectants' update, okay? Is there anyone else? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the storm water management update. Michael, is that not happening?
That is table to a future meeting.
All right. Then we will move on to the Council on Aging Needs Assessment presentation.
Thank you. You're the best. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Actually, yes, Stephen, sorry, why don't you hop on this side?
Sure.
Oh, you take my seat over there. You look good over there.
Yes, I will. Yes, I will.
You look good there, Stephen.
Thank you.
Why is the seat still warm?
Ladies, if you could just introduce yourselves for the folks at home?
And actually, Mr. Chairman, if we could have Stephen do just a little introduction to everybody?
Absolutely.
Sure. Hello, folks. Folks at home, thank you for having me. Is that a new camera? It is.
You're in HD.
Yes. Well, I hope my face complexion looks great on screen. I won't go into great detail except to give the board some background into how we ended up with this most august firm here, TSM Design, based in Springfield to assist us.
Could you just introduce the members of the board so our people at home can?
Sure. Stephen Cole, just some guy now, but a former town planner. I'm with Nancy Urbshot and Janet Bennett, who represent TSM Design. It is a branding and marketing firm. Through a competitive solicitation, TSM Design submitted a quote or a bid that was favorable to our price point, but also with their expertise and experience, we felt that they could deliver for us a quality product.
Okay. Are there members of the COA board here as well?
We do have some members of the COA board sitting over here to our audience.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And that product, Mr. Chairman, is the survey that I've talked about to this board a couple of times, the senior survey. So unless the board has any questions for me particularly, I would like to turn it over to Nancy and Janet so they can present their results and recommendations.
Everyone okay?
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and--
Sorry, you'll have to speak into the microphone so people at home can hear.
We appreciate having the opportunity to be here tonight and to present the results of the survey that we've been working on for quite some time. And I'll go into process in just a moment, but the agenda for tonight is after some brief introduction, we're going to go over the goals of the survey, the survey method, the results the survey yielded, and some recommendations.
Excuse me for one second.
Certainly.
Could you just introduce yourselves or who you may be?
Oh, yes. I'm Nancy Urbshot, yes. And this is Janet Bennett, and we're from TSM Design.
Thank you.
And we were engaged to work with the Needs Assessment Committee to develop a survey of adults 55-plus. And so we'll go into the detail of that. So one of the things that became very clear after our initial discovery, our initial meeting with the Needs Assessment Group, and then a discovery session, was that the town of Carver really values its older adult residents and wish to have a deeper understanding of what 55- to 85-year-old Carver residents are need and are looking for in a community and what their expectations are. Okay. So the goal of the survey was to learn about these four age cohorts that are comprised within the 55- to 85-year-old audience. One of the things that we were interested in why we were going to start with 55-year-olds and the wisdom of your Needs Assessment Committee prevailed, and it provided a great deal of valuable information that we'll discuss later. We were also, part of the goal was to assess the awareness and use of your Council on Aging and its program and service offerings. And so you'll see throughout, we have input regarding the services that are known, unknown, and those that are heavily used and lesser so. And it was also to provide insight into the future demands for programs and services. And that circles back to my earlier comment about 55, starting with the 55- to 64-year-old age cohort, because those are future users, primary users of Council on Aging services. Okay. So there was a process. So I believe it was back in January, we met with the Council on Aging Needs Assessment Committee and had a discussion with them about process. They asked a lot of questions about what we could hope to achieve with this. We told them that every engagement that we participate in, we always start with a discovery session, and that involves meeting people within the target audience.
Can I just stop you there for one second?
Certainly.
Savory, would you want to just come up here and just introducing the people that were on the Needs Assessment Committee?
Oh, that's all.
Oh, okay. And then you're chairman of this committee, so there may be more questions, so grab a seat.
All right. Hi, I'm Savory Moore, South Main Street, 12 South Main Street. The members of our Needs Assessment Committee were Joanne Nelson, who's here, Pat--
Henderson.
Henderson, and Ken Patterson.
Ken Morrison.
Morrison. I knew, first names only. We didn't really get that far. And for a while, George Callahan was that. So it was the five of us who were our board.
And for the record, that is on my slide.
Okay.
And what I wanted to say to the committee, it was a pleasure working with the committee, and the value that we derived from our work with you was your pushback on making sure that we included the 55- to 64-year-old age cohort, and also the people that you brought together for us for this discovery session that I just alluded to. It was very valuable to us to have a deeper understanding of a variety of people from both the villages and from the town of Carver, giving us a sense of, from their perspective, what they thought of when they thought about the Council on Aging and the kinds of services that were relevant. So it was an important, it was good to the process, and it was valuable to us. So based on discovery, we developed a survey, and we ran those questions by the Needs Assessment Committee. And once again, they asked questions, we revised, we came to a place where we were all satisfied that the survey was going to achieve the goals that I discussed just a few moments ago. It was the other thing that was really important to the Needs Assessment Committee that we'd never actually, we've never done this before. It was important to the committee that every single person who is 55-plus, that they all receive a survey. It wasn't, we didn't draw a sample, we didn't take every ninth name on the voter registration list, every one of the 4,095 people who are older adults ages 55-plus, they all received one. And it was important to them because they wanted to make sure that every person was heard, that they had equal opportunity. So we commend you on that as well. In terms of the survey marketing, we developed a postcard that was mailed to all of those households, alerting them to the fact that there was going to be a survey that was going to be arriving at their home. It was going to be mailed out exactly three days after they would have received the postcard, which it was, and it did. It was also important to the committee that people have an equal chance to answer that written survey versus an online version, which was also made available with a link. And so people had, they could answer it in the manner in which they wished to answer it, and they all had an opportunity to participate. The survey distribution went off exactly as it was planned. I think pretty immediately, you started receiving feedback that people were, in fact, had received that postcard, and sure enough, they received a packet with their information. There were also a number of ways that people could turn their completed survey in to make it convenient for them. So a number of points of collection or mail back. And now Janet.
So the results. So who responded? Well, first of all, as Nancy said, 4,095, there are 4,095 Carver residents age 55 and older. And according to the U.S. Census Bureau, the population of Carver, Mass. as of April 2010, and that's the last time the census was taken, was 11,509. So assuming that Carver's population among this age cohort has been relatively stable over the past nine years, the 55-plus population is estimated at just over 35% of the total population. And the number of survey respondents was 1,256, or 30% of residents age 55-plus.
It actually is rounding, it actually is 31%.
So that's quite an impressive rate, and that tells us that Carver older adults are So response by age, this first set of data, the Carver older adult population, that provides the breakdown of the population by age group. And as the Needs Assessment accurately surmised, it was important to include the 55- to 64-age cohort, given that that represents 40% of the town of Carver's aging population. We were also surprised that over 20%, or 1 in 5, of those residents in the 55- to 64-age group responded. So even they are quite engaged and interested in this topic. So not surprisingly, the older the cohort, the more relevant the survey, as illustrated by percent participation as a percentage of the total population. And this provides some important insight which we'll dig into further. Response by gender. The gender breakdown of the town of Carver's population per the census is 52% female and 48% male. And across all age cohorts, men participated at a lower rate than women. Overall, over 16% more women responded than men. So health, vitality, and fitness. Survey participants were asked to indicate where on a spectrum they see themselves, ranging from feeling younger than one's age to feeling older than one's age. And across the board, far more people indicated they feel younger than their chronological age. As well, more than half of all respondents, 57%, self-identified as being in excellent or good health. As one might expect, these numbers started to decline among older cohorts. Very encouraging, though, is that nearly 50% of respondents age 75- to 84 indicated that they are in excellent or good health. And even among the respondents age 85 and plus, almost a third indicate they are in excellent or good health. Survey participants were asked where they see themselves physically, from being physically fit to having severe mobility limitations. And almost half of respondents identify as physically fit, while another 37% indicate average fitness. As expected, the number of people who define themselves as physically fit declines with age, but by and large, Carver's older adult population identifies as healthy and fit. So social engagement. We asked survey participants where they see themselves on a scale of identifying as being a homebody to being very outgoing. And as expected, 85-plus that cohort identified in great numbers as being homebodies. Still, almost 40% of those identified as outgoing. Note the similarity in the percentages across the other age groups who identify as outgoing versus homebody, and very likely this indicates that these are perceptions of self rather than having to do with age.
And this slide will be important later on in some of the recommendations.
Mm-hmm. So community involvement. They were also asked about the degree to which they are involved in the community. More than half of respondents identify as uninvolved in the community. Interestingly, when you dig into the numbers by age, the 75- to 84 respondents are more involved, the most involved cohort in Carver's adult community. Lack of community involvement may mean respondents have never been invited to participate. Later, you'll see that access to volunteer opportunities ranked high is an interest among the 55- to 64 age group, and this, we believe, is an opportunity for the Council on Aging. Only 60% of residents age 55- to 64 are working full-time. Of the 1,225 respondents to this question, 188 people ages 65 and older are still working in some capacity. As expected, employment decreases as respondents age. Housing situation. So respondents were asked to describe their current housing situation. 97% of respondents live in a private residence or at one of Carver's senior villages. Only 1% of respondents indicate that they live in Carver public housing. There was a question raised about why survey participation was so low among residents of public housing, which either there are very few Carver older adults living in public housing, or there's a low response rate. And we believe either way, this would be an area to explore further, as older adults who live in public housing likely have a need for some of the services provided by the Council on Aging and may not be aware of them. Respondents were asked how they generally get around, and as expected, the percentage of people who drive themselves declines as people age. We were surprised by how few of the respondents age 75-plus ride the bus, as well as the significant majority of respondents age 85-plus who drive themselves. Respondents were asked how familiar they are with the Council on Aging. As you might expect, the older age cohorts are significantly more aware of the Council on Aging as their needs rise. They were also asked how familiar they are with specific Council on Aging services. In general, looking at the first two columns, greater than 50% of respondents do not know about the services provided by the Carver, by the Council on Aging. As expected, when we looked at the data by age, the younger the respondent, the less familiar they are with the services. We took a closer look at awareness among respondents who identified as being in poor health. 55% of survey respondents who identified as in very poor health have never heard of the COA, that the COA provides home visits. Almost 20% are unaware that the COA delivers free meals to homebound Carver residents. While this may appear alarming, that number is actually very low. It's not very many people, but it is a critical group of people to reach out to and connect with and follow up with. Likelihood of future use. So the respondents were asked how likely they are to use or participate in this Council on Aging services. Notice the small percentage of older adults who currently use the services. Compared to those who indicate that they may or will use the services in the future, the slide indicates the need for consideration of the Council on Aging's capacity. Determine the degree of accuracy of the Meals on Wheels numbers, we can extrapolate the 1% who currently use Meals on Wheels to the total population of Carver older adults, which suggests 30 people use the service. And I remember during an earlier call with Stephen and Carol, we learned that they roughly deliver 35 meals a day. So that tells us that our numbers are good, are accurate. Here's a look at the actual numbers who currently use a particular service to those who definitely will use the service. This represents all age groups, so this future will happen over time. You don't have to worry about tomorrow, there being a run on all the Council on Aging services, but it's something that tells us about what to look for in the future and that there is a demand that will only increase. We did look at responses by age, and there are 13 people in the 75-plus age range who may be ready for free meal delivery. Meals on Wheels. We wanted to assess the extent to which respondents qualify for Meals on Wheels. But first, take a look at the people who indicate they receive free meal delivery. In the last slide, we learned that nine respondents receive Meals on Wheels. Yet 57 people indicate that they qualify, another area requiring further examination. If we assume that the respondent percentage is applied to the entire population of Carver older adults and apply that 5% "yes, I do qualify" yes response, we can assume that roughly 192 Carver older adults qualify for Meals on Wheels, and an additional 293 are not sure whether or not they do qualify. So this is a list of interests that we presented by age cohort. They were asked about their interest level in potential activities. Here are their preferences by age. These comments represent potential areas of focus for activity planning. In all but the 85-plus age group, respondents are most interested in group trips and fitness. During the discovery session, the cost for group trips was raised as an area of concern for some Carver older adults. Also, notice the interest rate in social gatherings, how they increase in age cohort. So in the first 55- to 64, social gatherings ranked sixth. In the next age cohort, it ranks five. 75- to 84, it ranks three. And in the 85-plus, social gatherings ranks as number two. The 55- to 64 age group is looking for volunteer opportunities. That's a good thing. Also, fitness-related classes are in consistent demand in the sort of first, second, second, and third place all across the board. So fitness-related classes are, would be something to seriously consider. Lifelong learning is pretty consistent as well at the mid-level. Respondents overwhelmingly prefer weekday programming. We were surprised at that, but across all age cohorts, that was the preference. We were surprised at that, but across all age cohorts, that was the preference. Areas of concern. So based on our conversations we had during discovery, participants were asked to identify their most pressing concerns from, and that provided us a list that we, that we put into the survey. And thirty-two percent represent three hu, that's three hundred and eighty-seven people are experiencing one or more of these concerns. So that's, that's quite a lot. Naturally, this number only represents survey respondents, not the entire fifty-five-plus population. So if we apply this, that, that number is much larger. Respondents were asked to identify the three most important characteristics from a list that they would want to, in a COA building, a Council on Aging building. Here are the top three, followed by the other building attributes selected in order of importance. We also want to gain a better understanding of how older adults get their information. Word of mouth is a powerful thing. As you can see, six hundred and fifty-eight people, over half of respondents, indicated that that's how they get their information. And that's very powerful, and we'll talk a little bit about that in the recommendations of how to leverage that word of mouth to, to get people knowing and, knowing about the Council on Aging services and getting engaged. The monthly newsletter, respondents were asked if they read the monthly newsletter. Over fifty percent of respondents read the newsletter either every month or on occasion. Almost twenty-five percent report not receiving the newsletter. When we looked at age, respondents are more likely than not to read the newsletter. Age seventy-five to eighty-four and eighty-five plus are dedicated readers. One area to look at, neither twenty, nearly twelve percent of the seventy-five to eighty-four year olds and over twelve percent of the eighty-five-plus range respondents indicate that they don't receive the newsletter. And finally, website use. This is a, a big, this is a big number. Only the eighty-five-plus age range indicated that they would not be interested, less interested than would be interested, in a website dedicated to providing information about services and events and the goings-on with the Council on Aging.
So it's back to me and recommendations. And so, so I think you can see, based on Janet's presentation of what we learned, that this is a, this is a vital, healthy, engaged, uh, see, older adult population in Carver. And it seems that the Council on, the name Council on Agen, Aging doesn't adequately represent what your, what the population of, of people, at least the participants in this survey, the way they view themselves. During discovery, one gentleman said sixty is the new forty. One of the people in the, in the, their comments section said, and this is a very optimistic person, said eighties are the new fifties, which, I mean, that's, that's really optimistic. They, it, it was a, it was a matter of Council on Aging connotes a, a sort of a passive, a passive and, and not an active kind of organization. And the needs and the, well, the actual services that are provided by the current Council on Aging, I mean, it's, it's varied. It's, it's, it is active, and we just, we just think that there, it's something to consider, especially as, as the fifty-five-year-old cohort begins to move into that, that next category of, next category of older adults. So that was recommendation, recommendation number one. Number two, we recommend that you develop a clear, concise communication strategy and plan. Communication is so vitally important to any endeavor. And we, we feel as though the, while the newsletter is, is a, is a starting point, and, and it, and it, and it definitely has mass distribution, it seems as though there, there are some more dynamic ways that you might, might keep people involved and engaged in the activities of the Council on Aging. And so you'll remember that one of the questions that we asked about was website use. And we're thinking that it, as part of your strategy, it might, it, it might behoove you to think about dedicating a website where, where it, it can be kept, kept refreshed and where people know that they can go there and they can find the information that they need. There are also, uh, we've gone to your Facebook page, the town has active social media. It, it seems like people use it actively, and so there are lots of ways that you can build a strategy around making sure that people are informed and that they know the services that are available, and the programs that are available to, to everyone in that, in, in the four age cohorts. Was I supposed to say anything else? One moment, please. Pardon? Oh, yes. So you noticed a really high, the, the number one position for where do you get your information was word of mouth. And that's a really powerful, that's a powerful statement. And it also suggests that there are all kinds of opportunities for you with no cost at all to make sure that people are engaging with one another, that some sort of bring-a-friend program, making sure that you have people, there, the people who, who, who identify, self-identified as outgoing, those people should be corralled and, and, and brought into opportunities to serve as, and almost ambassadors for the Council on Aging and services. This doesn't have to be any one person's responsibility, but rather, it's the community's responsibility, the community of people who use the services. So we're really trying to think about how, how the community can, of those fifty-five to eighty-five year olds can coalesce around some of their own needs, in terms of need for information and, and the like. So, the next one. We, we were, as, as it, as it indicated, there are some people who are, who are facing some issues. There are also, there was the question about the one percent of people living in the public housing. It seems as though there's opportunity for beyond this survey to really dig further, dig, dig deeper into those issues and find out just how many people there, how many people in the older adult ages, how many are living in, in public housing, and then finding one-on-one ways to engage and, and assess need. You know, it would be interesting to, to know whether people who, the, the seniors who are living in public housing, whether, whether they're active voters, whether they're engaged at all, and finding ways to engage them, and, and, and it could be that they're not at all engaged. So there are opportunities, and, and, and one of the, our next, our next recommendation, developing community support programs. You know, once again, you've got, I mean, the, the twelve hundred-plus people who participated, this was not a, this was not a survey that you can just do in thirty seconds. It wasn't a, you know, three questions and you can mail in your coupon. People, people took time with it, and they, and they, and they took it seriously, and it seems like you have the start of a, of a cohort of community members who you can draw on to both develop some, some of their own programming and to, to assist other people with meeting their needs. The, this, the, remember the age cohort fifty-five to sixty-four, they report not being engaged, and yet you saw how high on the list of the, the kinds of activities that they were interested in. Volunteering was very high. And so it's, sometimes it, it's simply a matter of people not being asked or not knowing how they can, how they can become involved. And so, so you have just tremendous opportunity here to really, you know, to build, to build the kind of age, age, aging-in-place kind of community that you're all looking for. And it's right here. Okay, the next. It's, it's really important. This, this speaks for itself, to stay engaged with the, the older adult community. It represents forty percent, forty percent of your population. And, and that's, that's going to continue to grow. And so they're, they're vital, they have a lot to give, they have, they have the benefit of time, of wisdom, and so tap into that, tap into that, their potential. And, and this one, it's, it's really, it's a, it's a matter of building capacity for the, for the Council on Aging. We've, we've provided some recommendations about volunteer kinds of activities, engaging the users of services to build sort of affinity groups where they're, you know, starting a bridge club or, or some other, you know, interest group. But it, it's going to be a matter of, of the community determining that there are, there are likely a number of ways to build capacity, you know, transportation, perhaps transportation-wise, the number of Meals on Wheels services that are provided. There is, it appears as though the need is greater than, than, than what's currently being, what's currently being asked for. And so it's, it's a matter of, that'll be that long, that big, long discussion that you'll, you'll have, and you'll figure out how that, how that happens. But we do see really some pockets of opportunity that you can start with without, you know, without a lot of heavy lifting, but just purely engaging people. And that's the end.
Well, thank you. Thank you to you, you folks, Mr. Cole and the committee for this wonderful presentation. It's clearly you did a tremendous amount of work, and I think you've uncovered a lot of important information that we're going to be able to use, and the COA is going to be able to use to tailor services to the community. And so thank you, thank you to everyone for that. Questions from the board?
Just, Mr. Chairman, if I could just, just briefly, is, this is, as you just said, it's a ton of data that's been done and a lot of good information that provides a good overview of what, you know, the majority of, of the town and that age population are looking for. Our really next steps are, is Savory with his committee at their last meeting talked about, you know, some of these recommendations as to how to move forward. And, and I think what's going to be planned is a meeting between the Council on Aging Board of Directors and Savory's committee to kind of look at and kind of dissect what's in the report in more detail than we're discussing today. And then out of that joint meeting with Colleen's group and with Savory, is they'll come back with some more recommendations as to kind of the next steps that they want to bring forward to the Board of Selectmen.
I think that's really important. There's so much good data here that we have to make as much use of it as we can. So I, I think that's a, it's a very positive step. Questions from the board?
Well, gee, thanks. Thank you guys very much. I really appreciate Stephen, you guys, all your hard work, and the members of the, the, what was it called?
Needs Assessment.
Needs Assessment Committee, I'm sorry. All right. The preliminary that we got from Stephen was really insightful, and what you guys tying it all in together, it really helps us in the future of Carver and our seniors. And the people like me, who's fifty years old now and going to be fifty-five in a few more years, and who knows what's going to happen in being active and involved. And I love to see on each genre was volunteering. I mean, we need more volunteers here in the town to keep us running. And I think the senior population that we have, please fill out an application, come on down. All right, we need your help. So I really, thank you very much.
Yeah, I concur. You did, you guys did a lot of work. And having done surveys myself in the past, I appreciate how hard that work is. And the fact that you didn't just take a sample, you know, says a lot. And there's some surprising discoveries here, really. I, I mean, at least for me, some of them. So, thank you.
I'm surprised, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hoping we can really do some good with this.
I think for me, one of the, one of the data points that you mentioned was the percentage of people that are unaware of everything that COA involves or offers. And I think it's really important that we get the word out to the town, because there's a lot of great services down there going on right now that people can take advantage of. And I think the other thing is, how many people are interested in volunteering in the town? We have so many boards and committees that have vacant spots that we could use their help. So I think that's, that's important as well, and I think when you all get together, hopefully you can work on some strategies to try to get those folks involved. So, so thank you. Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Not really. One of the other next steps that we're going to do is we're kind of taking the show on the road. We're going to have some town hall-type meetings. There's going to be one, I believe, in the library, and we're going to also have open house meetings at the, at a couple of the villages. And we're hoping that the word of mouth that we know is a great facilitator gets some people to these meetings that perhaps did not fill out the survey and have other ideas that have not been discovered yet. So although we've worked on this for over a year and it's been a, a long process, this is the first step. There's a lot more work to be done, and, and I think that, as, as Bob said, every, every day, there's probably someone else who joins this group in this town. So it's important to keep ahead of it and to make sure that, that our seniors are taken care of and that all of their ideas and wishes are at least listened to.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you.
Just one other thing to add. I think when you look at other towns nationwide that are looking at how they address needs for this age population, one of the first thing you're seeing is eliminating the stereotype aging, is everyone ages, so it doesn't matter whether you're two or eighty-two, you're still going to age. But what you're seeing is more of a focus on active living. And whatever your age is, is how do you run the programs for that? And, you know, I think what this shows is that as the committees start to relook at this, and I think there's already been discussions amongst both committees already, is that, you know, let's broaden our reach a little bit. Let's look at, you know, how we satisfy people of all different, you know, age groups and, and social activities. I, I can remember when I first started getting involved in public service, I was at a, at a elderly facility, and I was talking about seniors. And, and I explained to one lady that she was a senior, and she was eighty-two years old, and she grabbed me by the cheek and she goes, "Sonny, I am not a senior. I refuse to be a senior." You know, and, and I just say that just as half-jokingly, it's, it's a lot of its mentality. And as we're looking at the active aging, you know, component or active living, that's really what we're trying to focus on, is how do we have people live healthier, more active, more socializing lives going into the future. And Stephen, I'm going to let you take it over from here and add a few more comments.
Forgive me, no, I, I realize my hands were far more active than they needed to be. I'm not even Italian. The fact, the fact of the matter, though, is that everything Michael just said is, is so important to me, because you, you folks who have worked with me understand, this is not just data, this is not just community development, this is economic development. Economic development is more than a land deal, it's quality of life. These folks who are aging, frankly, they're still active in the marketplace. Sixty-eight today isn't what sixty-eight used to be. I teased Savory a little bit, because when we first started this endeavor, he mentioned after, after one of our meetings on Tuesday, that he had spent eighteen innings of softball on a previous Saturday. My father is a bit younger than Savory, and... My father is a bit younger than Savory and inconceivable, I'll just leave it at that. I want to be polite to my dad who's not here to defend himself, but frankly, it's demonstrative of how active this segment of the population is and their activity longer in the marketplace is what in many ways drives economic growth, development and sustainability. So now that we have our finger on the pulse, Savory and Michael mentioned that we're going to bring the show on the road. Nancy and TSM Design has, is going to assist us with getting word out with developing those, those digital and postcard mailers. So my sense is you'll be hearing a lot more from us, but I know Alan's excitement is, is not to be contained, but the work is really just starting to begin now. And, and I have to say too, I, I did a bit of a disservice not mentioning at the front of it, but I think I've mentioned it each time I've been here. I didn't want to belabor the point. The body of work that the COA Needs Assessment Committee was able to start and build on was largely because of how active and receptive the COA Board of Directors has been. We never wanted to infringe or impugn on someone's sovereignty, right? I mean, the, the local government's all about local fiefdoms for the most part. The reception that we received, the open arms, the activity by Carol who's knitting me my sweater, my sweater for winter. Nothing, nothing that we presented to you today would have been possible if it wasn't for the COA Board of Directors.
Well, when, when I hear a comment like eighty is the new fifty, I think that's just wonderful because that shows the outlook that people have and that's a really positive outlook. So I think that's great and we have to embrace that as a community and, and do as much as we can with what we have. So, so with that, I think, I think we're all done.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, this portion of the meeting anyway, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
We will move on to our select board update. Ms. Yorss?
Thank you. I just wanted to let folks know, particularly those folks who live in Pine Tree Village, that I will be having my select board member office hours at Pine Tree Village on the first Friday of every month, starting this Friday, September sixth, from six to seven P.M. And I'm trying to see if I can get other locations as well.
Is it the first Friday of the month?
First Friday of every month, yeah, starting this coming Friday, September sixth. And then the other thing that I wanted to bring up, Mr. Chair, is not something we can really discuss, but we keep talking at every meeting about having a discussion, the future discussion that we're going to have about having town hall meetings or small group ways for us as a board to get information out to the public or hear their concerns. And, you know, it's been a while, I think we started that back in the spring.
I think we did.
And I just would like for that to happen at some point.
I, I agree. I think that would be a, a good thing and we should speak about putting it on the agenda.
Well, especially since we said we'd do it.
I agree.
Okay.
That it?
That's it.
Mr. Belvin?
Thank you. I want to thank the Veterans Agent, Mark Panino. He works for our town here and I saw him at the Council on Aging the other day. One of the things that we've talked about in the past was not having a good idea of how many veterans we actually have here in our town. So basically this is a plea to all the veterans who have served our town, served our country here, that you need to give him a call, you need to call the Veterans Agent. Let him know you're here in this town. That way he can find out all your benefits that you're allowed to get. He's there for you. That's why he's here, we pay for him, we want him to work for you guys. And you served our country and we're indebted to you. So please call him, he's a great guy. That's my first one. Did you want to say something, Mike?
Yeah, Bob, if I could just add to that, you're absolutely spot on is that we're trying to get as much information from veterans and Dan Badger in the back of the room has also been working with our Veterans Agent and they are going to be doing more outreach just like you said, trying to get more people involved. And whether or not people want their benefits or not, we, we do want to try to get that whole population more active. So the more you talk about that, the better.
Thank you. One of the other things that have been going on in the town is just there's been some action taken against one of the businesses in the town. It's in a residential neighborhood and it's bothered the neighbors a lot over the past couple of years, but the, the town is doing something about it and hopefully it's taken care of soon. The...
Want me to kind of elaborate on that?
Do you want to?
Sure. Specifically at the last board meeting, we had one of the neighbors came up and continued her, her plea to have this apparent violation of local zoning cease and desist. A cease and desist order was delivered by deputy sheriffs on the twenty-seventh to the resident on Center Street where this property is. And they do have a certain timetable that they have to operate in, but they have been issued an order to cease and desist.
Thank you very much for doing that. I do appreciate that, moving it forward. The other thing is the library air conditioning system, I know it was taken away at the town meeting and there were other opportunities. Is that still going on and, and where are we in the process with that? I know I did discuss it with you.
Yes, we have many building projects that are going on right now. That is one of the items that is in the drawing boards for looking at different design options for that. It is on the list that our operation and maintenance department is operating under. It's not the top of the list, but it is something that they're hoping to have a design available by the end of this calendar year so that we can look to moving that design forward next year with a more effective way of heating and cooling the building. There were some temporary measures that they made this summer just to, to keep the temperature down, although there were a few days that the temperature approached a hundred that made it challenging for any building to maintain its, its coolness. And I think on those days, we may have actually even closed down earlier for those few days.
Another finance thing is I was looking over the, the bills and everything that we got up there and the N-Star bill for the Silver Lake Regional High School, it was like eighty, eighty thousand dollars, somewhere around there. Can you explain that a little bit?
We're very nice, we share, pay other electric bills, you know, Sudden Man will pay them. No, no, seriously, what it is, is that's part of a, it's a, it's kind of a power credit that both us and Silver Lake have partnered together going back about six or seven years. With that, the town of Carver acts as the lead. We receive the full payment and then have to disperse almost half of the payment to them. That's why we make a payment to Silver Lake. It's part of the solar coming in and we're paying their share back to them.
I have the spreadsheet on that if you need to see it.
I'm sorry, I can...
The current spreadsheet on the, on what the town makes off of that, if you want to see it.
No, 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 I saw, I, I was seeing everything in there. I'm like, wow, okay. That was a lot of money, I just thought.
The spreadsheet explains the bill that comes in from N-Star, the bill we've, that we paid to Eversource which you saw, the amount we dispersed and then the profit the town makes. I have that all on a spreadsheet if anybody...
Thank you.
I'd like to see that, Elaine.
Yep.
All right. The last thing here is watch out for motorcycles. I rode one today, all right? Make sure you look around your, your cars when you're driving, all right? I know a very good friend of mine got seriously hurt in a motorcycle accident and I want to make sure people understood that. We're out there, the weather's getting nice to ride now, it's a little cooler at night. Please look twice, save a life. Thank you. Thank you. And I just have a few things. First of all, on Thursday, September nineteenth, the Cable Advisory Board will be holding a public hearing on the town renewal of the Comcast contract that expires later this year. That hearing will be held here in the select board meeting at seven P.M. So September nineteenth at seven P.M. Following up on what Bob had to say about motorcycles, schools are now open. Today was the first day of school, welcome back everybody, but kids are out at the bus stops, so just take a little extra time in the morning and, and be careful. September is a childhood cancer awareness month and our own local organization, Wicked Gold Carver, has a number of events going on, so watch out for those and help out if you can. And you can get a listing of all their events by checking their Facebook page or going to their website wickedgoodcause.org. For any of our Carver residents that are Korean War, that served the Korean War, the Korean Embassy in Boston is offering a special medal to commemorate your service. There is a form that needs to be filled out for that and if anyone's interested, they can send me an email through the webpage or, or contact, leave me a message in the Selectmen's Office and I'll be glad to get them a copy of that form. But there is a form that needs to be filled out, it's written and it's not available online. It's the Korean Ambassador for Peace Medal. I'd like to commend the Board of Health for keeping the public updated on the triple E situation. They've been very, very good about getting new information up right away on Facebook and on the website and I think it's important that everybody stay informed on that because it is a serious situation as, as the health agent Art Borden mentioned earlier. And, and that's it. Thank you. Let's see. We have the, the fuel efficiency vehicle policy. Michael, where are we on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As part of the Greens Community Act, this is one of the requirements that gets approved by both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen. This basically says is that for any new vehicle that the town purchases that is not a school bus, is not a public safety vehicle, meaning police or fire, and is not a DPW truck that's going to be move everything, that we're encouraged and promoted to buy energy efficient vehicles where possible. This really covers less than a handful of vehicles in the town, just given our small size, but it is one of the requirements for the Green Community Act, so I would ask the Board to vote in favorable on that document.
Okay, I think, I think this is important for a couple of things. This helps us move toward the, the green, green energy grant that we're entitled to. So questions from the board?
I don't have a question. I'd like a discussion, so I'll be, I'm going to make a motion to approve this fuel efficiency vehicle policy.
I'll second. Discussion?
Yeah, so I, I wanted to say that I really like the mileage that's recommended in this policy because if you go on the Department of Energy Resources website, we're asking for better fuel efficient vehicles than they even ask of their own state employees. So that's a really good thing. And of course, there's all those exemptions that you mentioned, the heavy vehicles, but it also says until those vehicles start being made to be more fuel efficient. So that's, that's also a plus. I think it's, I think it's a good policy.
Yeah, I think the next thing we're going to see is a movement towards electric buses.
Yeah.
And actually, that's probably not a bad thing in Carver because we don't have hills.
Yeah.
You know, like if you're in Worcester, electric buses probably is never going to happen, but in Carver, eventually with the battery storage that would happen, you might see movement in that direction and they would be subsidized to a certain extent.
Mr. Belvin?
Well, coming from a house that has two fuel efficient cars that make very good mileage, I think that would save on the town a lot. I have one with a hundred and seventy thousand miles on it and my son still drives it, so I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay. I just have one question. On, on the second page, near the bottom, the fuel efficient vehicle replacement plan, it talks about vehicles should not be replaced when they are no longer operable and will not be recycled from one municipal department to another. Does, does that mean that if, if one department has to replace a vehicle or maybe no longer has use for a vehicle, that we can't shift it to another?
Well, it depends what category it falls under. I mean, there was a long time where you saw like the old police cruisers, they would be passed down as the interceptors from one department to the other department. We, we kind of run those into the ground at this point, so we don't really use those at all.
Okay.
I mean, and again, on the town side, I think we have two vehicles that, that are used in the, in the lot. Of those, I know one of them was bought brand new, it was a small little pickup and the other one may be a hand me down that was there.
Okay.
But again, it doesn't, it's not a big item.
Okay. Okay. Is there a motion?
I would also say too, is that some of the incentives they're giving for electric cars and everything, we may be in a position in a year or two to get a grant to cover the majority of an electric car. And if that's the case and you have the plug-in modules, then that's probably we, we would go for like the, the building inspector. That's, that's, or the assessor. That's, that's about the extent of it.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? The ayes have it. Let's see. The approval of the amended Corey-Sory policy, to add Sory to policy, the criminal offender record information and sexual offender registry information. Is there a motion?
Yes. I move that we approve the amended Corey-Sory policy to add the Sory to the policy.
Second?
I'll second if a discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Thank you. So, no problem with it. The only thing that I would like to see, and it's not in here, is that, and I don't know if we are allowed to do this, is that anyone who is running for elected office, that they have this done prior to an election? If that's available to that?
Nice idea. What are they doing with these courts? So you can only run a Corey-Sory if you're going to be in a position where you're alone with fifty, say elderly, which is sixty-five and over, or the minors under eighteen. So if you're not going to be in that position, then you, you're not supposed to do one.
Okay.
And it's supposed to be for employees and volunteers. I don't know if, if that would count.
Doesn't sound like it would.
I mean, my feeling is, is that after you become elected, all right, you should probably end up going through the Corey process and the Sory process to ensure that if there is something there, but then it's too late, if to find something in there, to go ahead and say, oh my God, what about this that came up? So just to kind of spearhead things is that if you were even to do a voluntary, could you do a voluntary one to say, hey, can, if you're going to run when you come and take your papers out, would you be willing to do a Corey and a Sory check prior to the election and give that opportunity that the town does that through?
So we'll ask council whether or not we have the right to do that. And I think there's an issue of the rights here as to whether or not we can dictate it. I think that's challenging. On the flip side, whenever anyone runs for office, the Board of Selectmen can adopt a request that anyone who runs for public office does this. They don't have to, but you could, you could make that request. And if you have two people running and one chooses to do it and the other one doesn't, well, then that may raise some questions. So through that, that election process is where you most likely will have to go and, and again, let me check with council on that, but that's kind of what I think on this at this point. But I do think that, you know, adopting a policy or recommendation or request that's there for anybody running is a way of addressing that.
Okay, thank you. I assume we have a, a policy right now?
We have, we have a Corey policy.
Okay.
So Corey only shows records of offenses in Massachusetts.
Okay.
By adopting the Sory, that's a national database.
Okay. The only thing I might request when we do things like this in the future is, is perhaps a red line copy or something so we could see the difference between the previous policy and the new policy we're adopting? I think that might be a, a good idea. But that being said, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? The ayes have it. Next, we have an update from Bob Belvin on the Carver Marion Wareham Regional Refuge District. Mr. Belvin?
Thank you. So at the last meeting that we had, just to give you an update, is the district has voted to have a hundred and twenty-five dollar fee for two thousand and twenty, starting in two thousand and twenty. And that's for operating cost for this year, the next year, all right? The next one is the district's going to pay for stickers instead of the town, we're going to pick up that cost. The cost to run next, the system as a whole, if we continue, because we haven't even voted to keep the district or not keep the district or where we're going to go with this. And that's a tough thing because of the figures that are out there. And one of the things that I do agree with is the 1.4 million to run the facility between the amount of data that we got from before with our, our executive, Jeff. All right, it's six hundred thousand for the employment costs and for running the facility and then eight hundred thousand dollars to get rid of all the trash and recyclables. That's a one year. We have to pay for that. And like I've said before is that I can't go along with something that's going to say that the town's going to have to pick up costs. costs. You can't. It's got to support itself. So, in 2021, there's been no discussion, like I said, we're going to keep it or we're not going to keep it. We're waiting for the selectmen to give some guidance on if we're going to do this or not. The amount of people who's going to pick up this cost, the figures that I'm not 100% in line with is you need to have so many people to pay the 1.54 million to go ahead and keep it low. The more people that get involved, the cheaper the cost is going to be. Is it going to be $250, or is it going to be $350? We don't know yet. We have to find out. That's why this $125. We'll get a good idea of how many people are willing to spend $125 right now. In 2021, it's going to have to go up, but we don't know. We need to know what these initial figures are going to be. When it went from here in town to $50 for every two years, and then $50 for every year, we lost people. All right. It's probably going to happen again, but we don't know. But you only have one other option, is to private haulers. And how much are they going to cost? I mean, I did numbers before. It's really tough to say. We don't know. It's kind of that number of how many people are going to use our services. So, we don't know. In 2021, we don't know. Pretty much all the options right now of how to reduce that fee are on the table, whether it be bags, not bags. We do a scanning system instead of stickers, a scanning license plate. There's so many different options of how to run a facility. But we have a plan to change the facility over, make it a little more streamlined. And we've actually asked them to move forward and talk to Rochester to see where we're at and how we're going to do this, and is it going to be affordable for us. So, one of the other issues is, right now, we have Carver, Wareham, and Marion. Marion came to the Board. One of the selectmen gave some conditions to keep their facility open in Marion. Unfortunately, doing the numbers, we can't keep two facilities open. It's just too much. Too much money. We can't do it. And one of the reactions of the Board was to make a motion to close the Marion facility. It was seconded, we discussed it, and through the discussions, that we would actually lose money from Cavanta coming in, that it's not feasible to close that at this time, that we pretty much have to keep it open until the end and get as much money as we can from Cavanta. But that was pretty much telling to Marion, because, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, they already have their own trash hauling pickup system through waste management. So, we don't know where they're going to be at, if they're even going to stay in the district or they're not. We don't know. Okay? We did ask our executive to contact Cavanta to get a decent rate for our trash hauling, and it looks like $75 a ton is the number for three years. And then it's got a certain boost up. It's like 75, then 79, and 82, somewhere around there. Don't quote me on those numbers, because I didn't bring them with me today. But it's somewhere around those numbers for the three years, and then we could do it for another two years and whatnot. That rate is going to be beneficial to the local haulers, too, because it wouldn't be just for us, it would be for the local haulers, too. So, they would get some benefit, too. For the town administrator, I did file a conflict of interest, just to cover myself with that. With the lawsuit pending, I didn't do it before, but just let people know, I did have some message contact back and forth, or at least back, not forth, but of my position and whatnot. And I stepped away from anything dealing with a lawsuit. So, I wanted that to be there. That's really it. I mean, hopefully, the next meeting, we'll have Jeff come in and to give you guys all the figures, all the numbers, because we are going to need that for you guys to figure out. If you guys want me to go back and say, "Yeah, keep it up," my opinion, my personal opinion is to at least keep it open for a couple of years and see how it goes, and cross our fingers that we can pay all our bills. And if not, then we can't run it.
That $125 fee you're talking about, that money would all go back to the district, correct?
Correct. That money goes all back to the district.
And right now, our sticker fee is coming back to the town, right?
Correct. Right now, the $50 fee is being paid to the town. The town, at one point, was in essence paying a quarterly payment to the district, but that has been waived by the district, so there's no payment to the district. But for the last two years, there was a payment to the district that came out of the fees.
Okay.
The other thing I'll just add is, you know, just for everyone's edification, again, we keep on saying this, but I want to say it every time, is the Carver-Marion-Wareham Regional District is its own independent governmental body. It can do what it wants within the rules that it was established. The town of Carver, or the town of Marion, or the town of Wareham can't tell the district what to do, and vice versa. The district can't tell the towns what to do. The district has a very narrow role in providing a transfer station that's used regionally. The town of Carver, as the town, has no responsibility and nor has ever provided any type of pickup in town. Currently, right now, significantly more than half of the people, according to our health agent, do have private hauler service in the town. But again, there are, you know, many residents in town that do use the transfer station. And as Bob has stated, and Bob's predecessor, Dave Robinson, has stated, is that, you know, this day of reckoning is coming in 2001. And whether the sticker is 250, or 300, or 350, or more, it's going to be more than double than what you have right now for the 125, because the 125 is just covering the operations, and the disposal is more than the operations. So, you know, as Bob mentioned, it's all about how many participants you have. If you have a lot of participants, the number can stay lower. If you have less participants, the number will be significantly higher. When do you cross that threshold that people are going to say, "I'm not going to drive there, I'm just going to get a private hauler?" That's yet to be determined. But there is going to be some magic number in there at some point. But there's no way of forecasting it any better than we have right now, until the district's new effort goes into play.
I think what's apparent to me, as I speak to people around town, is that every time we increase that sticker price, and this is very obvious, less and less people are going to buy that sticker. And it's going to be interesting to see what that number drops to when we get to $125. And I think the one important thing for us all to keep in mind, it's important, whatever the number is, whatever we do, that we don't get into a situation where the town is subsidizing the district. And I think that's important to keep in mind.
One of the other things that we are doing with the district is we're going to do two more hazardous waste days in November. And the one will be in Carver here, the Rochester salt shed area. And I wanted to talk to the town administrator to see where are we on cleaning up that area, just so there's a better flow. Because I went the other day, and as was discussed at the meeting, that some of the things had to be moved around and for a better flow. But there was also a big pile of junk that's back there, too, so we don't want our residents to drive back there and see that, say, "Oh, my God, we know where all the trash and junk goes." So, for the town.
Well, we're not going to commit on cleaning up the trash and junk, if that's where the Operation Maintenance Department is storing it. But after the district meeting is, the deputy director of the O&amp;M Department was made aware of the work that needs to be done, and it will be done prior to the hazardous waste day, to make sure that we have the appropriate traffic flow. So, it will be done prior to then.
So, one of the other things with the hazardous waste, just to let people know, is that as it gets closer, more information's going to be poured out there of what you can bring and what you can't bring. And one of the things to make it a whole lot easier is that you collect some boxes now, some cardboard boxes, and put them in cardboard boxes, all right, to bring it down there, things you don't want to wait. Because when you bring a plastic container, bin, or whatnot, and you want that back, it takes more time for them to empty it all out and then give it back to you. So, if you have a cardboard box, put it in that, bring it down, drop it off, and leave. The quicker flow that works for this, it'll just go by so much quicker, and we get more people in and more people out. And there's only a three-hour window, if I remember correctly, that we'll be doing this for. So, and no paints, no latex paint.
Bob, do you want to emphasize, too, that this is for residential, not commercial?
Most definitely. Residential only. And that was one of the other things, is that at the Route 28 site, anytime you go down there, you see a lot of commercial trucks going in there, and they're throwing everything under the sun. When the district takes over, in my opinion only, is that this is going to be residential only. No more of this extra weight of coming in, because we, like I said, it's a ton. We've got to pay per ton. And the people that we have working for us need to understand that you need to stop them at the gate and say, "No, you can't bring your commercial stuff in here. There's a place across the street." And that's where our security that will have to come into play and say, "No, you can't bring this in." And that'll reduce our costs. So, thank you.
Sarah?
I'm all set.
All right.
Mr. Jermaine?
If I'm incorrect, isn't Rochester's facility being used to store the materials that are working on the Rochester Road Bridge?
There's still ample room on the site. I think that's what Bob was mentioning.
There's a trailer down there with seawall sections, so there's still in that site.
Yeah, I think that's in the back.
Yeah, I have confidence that our men who work for our DPW and
Men and women.
Men and women
Yep.
Can do this job and get it done and make sure it flows, because that's what's going to be. One of the things is, the way it used to be done is you drive in, you drop your stuff off, and then you'd have to drive around and leave. It'll be different. You drive in, go around the mound of hill, and then you leave, they'll be set up right there. So, therefore, you drop it off and you walk out. So, you have a lot more area to have cars waiting to get done. And I think the workflow will be a whole lot better.
And Bob, wherever, please detail there, too, I believe, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Bob. All right. Town Administrator update?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I have several updates. Just, some of these are just generic updates. But I wanted to mention, with our emergency management division that we have in town, is the nuclear power plant was approved for sale. Because they still have nuclear material in there, there's still going to be a readiness plan that's going to take us through the spring of next year. But after that, it's probably, we're not sure when, but they're going to cease some of the emergency preparedness programs they have, which also will mean the grant that they have there, which will mean that our emergency management function, we need to figure out what the level of effort's going to be for that, future cost operations, you know, we're going to be dealing with at that point, potential, you know, Mother Nature emergencies or issues like that. So, over the next two years, we are going to be relooking at that function. Second is, and again, this is just to put on your radar screen, when we get to the point of tearing down the old police building, currently, right now, some of the power and utilities run from the old police station into EMS. So, we're going to have to be making modifications for that as that goes down, which is also a future phase of the King Property Recreation Complex, where on the right side, some of those old storage units, we have looked to take down and reverse the ball field there. Those are the ones where the center beam gets pushed out by the car. When the car leaves, you push the center beam back in to raise the roof up. So, again, I'm just putting that on everyone's radar screen. Next is, on October 16th, there's going to be two auctions held in the town here. One's going to be for about 13 properties. It's going to take place in the morning. These are properties that were taken by tax title. They're going to be using, the Zekus Group is going to be overseeing that town auction. And that's going to also, and then in the afternoon, we're going to have a land-to-low value auction, which I'm not sure the number of parcels, but I know it's more than 13, that are going to be in the afternoon. Two different processes we have to go through, but the treasure collector's office is moving forward with that. This is also Emergency Preparedness Month. So, kindly follow all the things on the website. They talk about being prepared for any type of natural disaster, as we are in hurricane season at this point. Another update, you may have heard that there was a national settlement on one of the opioids producers. The town of Carver is part of a class-action group that's looking at opioids, and that is being handled by Powers and, I'm sorry, by KMP Law as that goes forward. So, we are part of a national-type review on how to get money back in to help pay for some of the impacts that have happened to our society in training and education and so forth. So, that is in the works. The Fire Department is in its hiring process. I think everybody's seen, applications are due, so they are looking to add a few more men and women to the department. Next Tuesday, we're having mandatory training on Tuesday, late morning, for all town hall employees as
Department?
Department heads. Sorry, this one's for department heads. Some we have for regular employees, some we have for department heads. These are sponsored by Maya to better inform and update the public, I'm sorry, the department heads in how they handle actions within the town. Let's see. I just want to reiterate, at our last board meeting, there was some discussion that the town has contaminated people's drinking water supplies, and that they have exceeded the DEP standard for 1,4 dioxide. Again, I just want to reemphasize that that is not the case. There has been no test that shows that anyone's drinking water supply in the town of Carver has exceeded what's required under DEP. We also did get a call from DEP last, I guess it was last week, that the state had funding available to test within two miles of an airport, all airports around the state, for any public drinking water supply. And what the state does is, sees new chemicals that it's concerned with, it starts to develop a protocol with that. This new chemical is PFAS. This is used in a lot of foam issues when it came to Class B. Is it B?
A is the good one.
A is the bad. Okay. We had this in our department head meeting this morning, where the chief updated us, is that Part B is for petroleum, Part A is not. So, the DEP came in and tested our public drinking water supply over at the middle high school, because it's within that area. So, we're just waiting on the test for that. Again, it's a new chemical that they're recommending gets tested for. Let's see. We've already talked about the district fee, the 164 Center Street, budget look ahead. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Can I just ask, so back to the 1,4 dioxin issue for a minute. So, just to be clear, there are no tests that have shown elevated rates of the 1,4 dioxin?
We have had no test on anyone's public or private drinking water supply that shows anything exceeding the state standards for 1,4 dioxin. We did have one well at the edge of the former North Carver landfill that one time, and again, first time it was tested showed nothing. Next time it was tested, there was a hit that exceeded the standard. Again, this is not a drinking water supply, this is a monitoring well.
Right.
One time. Then after that, I think there's been three other tests that have been all reported negative. So, we're still going back to see if there was an error in that regional test. They save all the data, how that was collected. DEP has actually suggested we do that, because we haven't been able to recreate or have a backup test come back to that. So, although we still have to respond to that, it is being perceived right now as we're looking at as an anomaly. But again, nothing in anyone's public drinking water supply.
Supplies. That's important to know. And as far as the water tests over at the middle high school, did the state give you any kind of guidance on when those results would be available?
No, they were sent right up to the lab. The labs have to reconfigure the whole setup. So, I'm hoping to get those results back within a couple of weeks. Then from there, and the state is hoping they come back negative, because the state's still not sure, even if they come back positive, what they're going to recommend towns to do. It's just a new chemical that's being put into the, excuse me, protocol.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
On that list of properties that are going to be up for auction, and what was the date again?
That is October 16th. I think it's starting in I think it's starting at 10:30 a.m. There's going to be information on the town's treasurer's website later on this month to identify all those parcels and what they're going to be.
And they'll be listing, posting here too, and also on just the website?
It has to be advertised in the paper, it'll be on the website, and so, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one other thing. All of the DEP sites that have been identified by the Department of Environmental Protection, you can find them on their website. You go to reportable sites, and it has the list of all the addresses of everything, everything that's going on.
That's fine. I just wanted to make that clear for the folks watching on television, that's all.
And there is a difference between not having any in your well versus having it be at a level that is cause for concern.
Thank you.
With the electric with the police and the EMS, was that covered under the budget for the process, or is that going to be over and above to fix that issue with the electric and the police and the EMS building?
No, it's something that we've always known is going to have to be addressed. And actually, I'm glad you brought that up because, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I collected two other points that I wanted to bring up. One of the items that tied into the new police station, and the police station building committee voted last week to move forward with advertising the project. That will be put out to bid at the end of this month, with bids being received in October, and hopefully, an award being made in early November, if not sooner. So, that project is moving forward. One of the items that we were looking to do was the building will have sprinklers. And since it was in close proximity to the library, there was a desire to take the library cistern and fire pump and connect that to the new police station. We'd also looked at doing the same thing with the fire department across the street. And that was something that was approved by the chief, the fire chief, to take a look at. If you already have a big vat of water in the ground and you've got a pump that's already there, and alls you've got to do is build pipe to connect it, then that's what you do. So, we went through that analysis, and what we found out was that, yes, that would work, it was a great idea. However, we found out that the library, when they built the building, they built a steel cistern underneath the building, you know, pretty much the size of a third of this room. Steel rots. Steel rots when it's underground. When it rots and it leaks, you can't fix it. The building will last longer than the cistern, the metal cistern that's there. So, that kind of shot that idea out of the ballpark. But as we were going through that scenario, it got us thinking more about how do we develop kind of a, you know, use one facility with one pump to manage multiple properties when we're all in close proximity like we are with this campus? But if you look at this building, there's no sprinklers in this building. Obviously, there's no sprinklers in the old police station. There's none in the EMS building. The library has one with a steel tank. We then expanded our scope a little bit further and was looking at the housing authority behind us and South Shore Housing, the other complex. And if you drive down there, there's two fire hydrants. Great, they got fire water down there. Well, the problem was is those fire, those two pumps were connected over to the river behind the facilities where they used to have the pump that are no longer inactive. So, we have two fire hydrants down there that are inactive. Great, all right. So, if there's a fire, I mean, obviously, our fire department knows that they're inactive because we don't have public water supply here. Long story short is what I recommended, and the chief has looked at, and everybody's in favor of this, is that we know the library at some point will most likely fail. We know that this building at some point may have to get some upgrades and may need something. We know that the EMS building in the next ten years may need an upgrade and may have to put sprinklers in there. Why build a new cistern for each one of these buildings? So, what we're going to look to do is in the parking lot, or adjacent to the parking lot, next to the library, is putting in a large cistern in the ground, connected to our municipal well that can feed that, you know, to fill it up. We know when we're not drinking municipal water. And then off of that, then having one fire pump be able to connect to the new police station via pipe. Also, look at connecting via pipe to the South Shore Housing, to the housing authority property to connect those two hydrants. We haven't done this yet, but we're going to work with our state rep and state senator to see if there's any funding available from the state to help pay for that connection to the state-owned property so they can help defray some of our costs. And from an operation standpoint for Dave Sigintoff is that, you know, eventually, he'll only have one pump to manage and one cistern to manage that can be used at multiple different buildings. So, that's a change that's going to take place, that we'll also have to change our capital plan and go to town meeting this April to get money to build this new public cistern, which also provides, and here's another benefit of the thing, and not only is the housing authority a benefit, but in central Carver, it's where the chief has more of a challenge of finding open public water supplies. Obviously, if you're in South Carver, you've got Sampson's Pond, you've got all these ponds all around here. You know, they have a small facility behind the elementary school, but that gets overgrown with weeds and some other issues. So, we're going to look at using some of that MVP grant to see if that can help offset the cost of building this new, you know, I want to call it a public water or a public fire suppression system that'll have a cistern so they can bring the tankers in there and get filled up quickly and go to a fire, you know, if they need quick response.
Great idea.
So, that's a change that we're looking to do. And then the other change, and this will also be an additional capital expense at the April town meeting, is we're looking, and it's already in the capital plan, we're just going to have to broaden the scope, is that for putting together a new town-wide radio system for public safety. And right now, there's frequencies changes. The radios only last so long, you have to upgrade those, you've got to deal with microwaves, you've got to deal with, we're going to run a new fiber line from the new police station, I'm sorry, from, not the new police station, from the elementary school down to where the main tower is down behind the Weston property, which is where our large tower is that we have service. We're running it from the elementary school because that's where our data hub is. So, we're trying to build a redundant system that not only is going to have the radio frequencies, it'll all be connected by microwave between all the towers and then by fiber as well. So, we'll have three ways of making sure the signal can transmit through the town. So, we're going to be doing that as a new public safety, public communication project. The tower that's currently at the police station right now, upon further review, doesn't have a long useful life left to it. It's fine for right now, it's fine for a few more years, but it's not available for any upgrades, and they're concerned with some deterioration that, you know, within the next decade, it would have to come down anyway. So, the fire department was already looking at some of these upgrades, and this just now provides an opportunity for doing it on a more holistic approach and doing it more cost-effective by doing it as one large project. It will be an expensive project, but I do anticipate, you know, potentially some additional free cash this year and next to help offset this cost through some permit fees and other things that are coming. So, those are two kind of like changes that are coming with the police station project.
The cistern you mentioned, obviously, we're not planning on building another steel cistern?
We would definitely not build a steel. It would either be a fiberglass, which is what we did over at the elementary school until Abaco ran into it. But it was repaired before it was closed in. We would either do fiberglass or some type of cement structure. But yes, we're not going to do any more steel. And most importantly, we won't build it in the middle of the building.
Another good idea. Anything else? All right, moving on. Minutes, licenced topics, not reasonably anticipated by the chairman, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. Update on executive session, minute review of town council.
Well, we are waiting for town council to get back to us on the 2018 minutes, and when they do, then we'll send up the 2019 minutes.
Okay. We have a request to use Shirliffe Park on October 5th, 2019, 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. by SABBS for a dog show.
I move that we allow them to use Shirliffe Park.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
I just want to make sure that all the dogs are leashed and to make sure that all their rabies shots and are all up to date, that there is documentation on that prior to them going in there.
Mr. Town Administrator, do we have that information?
No, we do not, but we will get it. Good.
Okay. Requested data October 5th, so do we want to push this to our next meeting?
You can approve it subject to that.
Yeah. Would you want to amend your motion?
Yeah, I move that we approve this subject to having all the licensing information that Bob just mentioned.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? The ayes have it. The minutes of August 6th, 2019.
Elaine asked us to table those.
Yes, I didn't see those in the pack. Are we going to table those?
Please.
All right, let's see. Our next meeting will be September 17th, 2019, and on September 26th, we have a joint meeting with the school committee. Summer is over, so we're back to our regular first and third Tuesday of the month meetings. And a motion to adjourn?
We just did a little Google search on these dogs, and the males can weigh 140 to 200 pounds, and the females 110 to 140. So, these are, these are small horses.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.